So I'd like to ask that Brad and Forbes Ellis, the Breathe Man Coordinator, come up.
Oh. Yes, the doorman. You're on the list.
Good evening, welcome. Brad Bealio?
No, actually, I'm Don Nicholson, the Administrator.
Don Nicholson, well, welcome.
They sent me in a pinch.
Well, welcome. Were you here last year for this?
No, I wasn't. I was, I just moved here from Wisconsin.
Welcome to sunny California in the wintertime.
It's beautiful.
It's fabulous. Well, I have this proclamation, and I'm very, very proud to present it to you, recognizing Heartland Hospice and proclaiming December 7th, 2013, Heartland Hospice Day. Whereas Heartland Hospice has been serving families in the city of Capitola and the Santa Cruz County community for over 10 years, whereas the mission of Heartland Hospice is to enrich their patients' lives and the lives of people who love them by preserving their dignity, showing them respect, and treating them with caring compassion. Whereas Heartland Hospice promises to care for the mind, body, and spirit of their patients, whereas the city of Capitola has joined together with Heartland Hospice, recognizing Heartland as a community partner in care. Now, therefore, I, Stephanie Harland, RN, Mayor of City of Capitola, hereby recognize Heartland Hospice for the compassionate service it provides to our residents and proclaim Saturday, December 7th, 2013, as Heartland Hospice Day in the city of Capitola, and encourage residents to join me at the Capitola Bandstand for the Third Annual Light Up Alive Memorial Celebration to be held on that day from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. So please join us, it's a lovely event. Here's your certificate, and the audience is right there if you'd like to say anything about your organization.
Well, my name is Don Nicholson, I'm the Administrator of Heartland Hospice, and Breathe Man is something that I'm very passionate about, and our Light Up Alive event that we're having on December 7th is really a way for all of us to get together and celebrate the people that we've been able to touch over the years. And the event is open to everybody, because I think all of us have had special people that are not with us anymore, and it gives us a moment to remember everybody that's touched us and has made us who we are. So, very well put, Mayor, beautiful proclamation, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I have to say that all the hospice workers, from the nurses, and the caregivers, and directors, and administrators, and support people, and everyone are angels on earth. They are wonderful. Next is a report on closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council had a conference with its legal counsel regarding Schrodel et al. versus the city of Capitola, it received an update but took no reportable action. The council also received an update on labor negotiations with the groups listed on your agenda packet, but took no reportable action on that item.
Thank you very much. Next item is additional materials, we have a corrected page from the Capitola minutes, the city council minutes of November 14th, and an additional email, copy of an email that we received today. So the next item is additions and deletions to the agenda.
Madam Mayor, staff will be recommending that item D on the general government be continued to January, excuse me, to the December 12th council meeting. This item was noticed for this hearing date, but staff would like to move it to December 12th. In addition, you may want to do that now in case anyone is tuning in or present tonight to comment on that. In addition, I would recommend moving item E on the general government public hearings up to be the third item heard this evening after the Art and Cultural Commission item.
So we shall do that unless there's any discussion about that. Would someone like to make a motion to continue D?
Also move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item is public comments, and this is a time for the public to come up and speak on any item that they would like that's not on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, please wait until we get to it, and you're welcome to speak at that time. Any public comments? Then we'll move on to city council comments, are there any city council announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This Saturday, Surfing Santa comes surfing into our beach, and will talk, speak to all the children. It's a great event, and he's the best Santa I've ever met. And also, I've attended the last, the last two of the hospice events, and I cannot recommend it more strongly, whether you've lost anyone, whether you haven't, whether you've encountered hospice, whether you haven't, it is just remarkable and moving, and should go down there.
Any comments? See how many announcements?
No comments.
Dennis?
Yes, last week in the RTC, they approved two funding requests from the city of Capitola, for tentative approval, anyway, for $200,000 for the sidewalk from the Upper Pacific Cove up to our rail corridor, which is a connection that takes people out of arms' way of walking up the road out of the parking lot. And also, we received, we were receiving $90,000 for the study for the roundabout on the Bay Avenue corridor. So that's the start of that program, being able to design it.
I was in the Capitola Book Cafe getting some Christmas presents today, and the lady said that, she said, "I recognize your name," now where do I know that from? And we started talking about city things, and she said that she had come as a child to Capitola for many years during the summer to play, and that she knew lots of other people that did from the Santa's area, and this was Aunt so-and-so's house, or this was Grandma's house, and that just, just all the excitement about early Capitola came out, and she said they were so excited when they saw the book, and people that she's talked to point to things and say, "Yeah, I know that, that was my aunt's house," or something like that, "I remember doing that," or "I remember doing that." And what a wonderful memory that people have of, you know, the 50s and 60s and 70s in Capitola, and I hope that, trust that we'll, we'll continue to keep this place, it's such a wonderful place that it is, I'm really just proud of everybody's work and leadership. It's really fun to have those kind of encounters with people. Are there any city treasurer comments? Are there any staff comments? Then we'll go on to board and commission, committee appointees, and we have something down in section 10 about that. So we'll go to the consent calendar, which is a list of relatively minor items that are taken in one motion and one vote to save time, unless anyone would like to pull something separately, or a member of the audience would like to pull something separately.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Stephanie?
Questions.
I have one question on the check register, so.
Okay, we can do that now.
Okay, maybe Mike can answer this for me. Seventy-four, six-eighty, and what it is, it's a payment to Ted Latchow, he's the guy that does all the tile workforce on the seawall down there, and the work he done there, I think, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that it was actually donated from the unusual suspects, those people donated for the, for the tile placings of the tiles.
There's, there's two bits of work that he did, and I'll let staff.
I had Ted come in and reface all the tiles from the tile project.
Okay.
And recode it, reseal everything for every, all of that area, it was time, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
So that's what it was for, it had nothing to do with the, that other location where the usual suspects put up their plies.
And that money came from them, right?
Right, the Surf Aloha money came.
The Surf Aloha was a separate thing, but the, the maintenance for the tiles, that came from the Public Art Fund.
Great, thank you, Lisa.
So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item is 10A, presentation regarding the budget for the general plan update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So the general plan update budget, just the background and the status, as you recall, we initiated $892,000 consultant contract in the fall of 2010. Of that, $674,000 was general plan maintenance funds, and approximately $218,000 were grant funds. In July 2013, we did provide your council with an update on the budget, and we've made considerable progress since that meeting, including three GPAC meetings, we've completed the draft general plan, an administrative draft environmental impact report, and we've completed the 45-day public review period for the general plan, responded to comments, and as you're all aware, we had a special joint city council planning commission hearing last week, and received direction to initiate public review. The general plan budget was broken down into approximately four major parts. Background studies and public outreach was the largest component of the budget allocation, that represented about 45% of the overall budget, and that work is completed. We're currently in the plan preparation stage, moving into the plan adoption stage, and then there's a smaller piece of the pie remaining for contingency and general expenses. So today, we have spent $693,307 of the overall contract, which represents about 78%, and it's a 6% increase since we last reported to you in July. There's currently a little under $200,000 remaining in the contract, and as you can see in the table, we've spent about 76% of the allocated budget for the plan preparation, and we still have approximately 88% of the budget remaining for the plan adoption. The next steps that we still need to complete is to revise the draft general plan based on comments we received from the GPAC, members of the public, the planning commission, and your council. Then we will circulate the general plan environmental impact report for public review, again, make revisions based on input we received from public comments, and then move through the adoption process with hearings before the planning commission and city council. Once the general plan update is adopted, we will renew efforts on updating our zoning ordinance and local coastal program, as well as developing a new climate action plan. So that concludes my presentation, I do have Ben Noble and Steve Noack from DCE, the Planning Center, and we are all available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Mike?
Just a question for staff, at the Thursday meeting, the joint meeting between the planning commission and the city council, it was discussed, and I think pretty much agreed to, that we would not amend the LCP. Could you tell us how much that's going to save us?
Well, we're going to be required to amend the LCP to reflect any changes that we make for the zoning ordinance.
But this was a decision that was made, you know, when the budgeting was done, we were going to present a new LCP to the coastal commission, and I thought we backed off of that to prevent the coastal commission from doing a thorough review of more than we wanted to show them.
I don't recall that proposal or direction, I think we are going to reevaluate on how comprehensive an update we're going to do with the LCP. There will need to be some amendments to reflect any changes with the zoning ordinance, and to make sure that there's nothing in the general plan that would cause a need to make amendments.
I seem to recall that, and I think all five of us were at that meeting, that there was a consensus, at staff's recommendation, that we throttle back a local coastal rewrite, an LCP rewrite.
Councilman Termini, I think the best way to describe it at this stage is, is that staff is recommending that we not cast our lot, if you will, with the LCP and commit to a complete rewrite. I think that there are a number of other jurisdictions that are going through this process, and we'd like to see how it turns out with them. Regardless, we're going to need to make some focus changes to the LCP based on the new general plan as it, as it comes out, and the question just becomes, how comprehensive of a rewrite do we have to do? I think staff certainly shares the council sentiment that there's no sense in rewriting something that doesn't need to be rewritten, so.
But, well, the point I was trying to make is, I think when we budgeted this, we were talking about rewriting the LCP, and now we're not, so should we not amend the budget in that line item to the consultant?
I, I think there would be some cost savings from not doing a comprehensive update to the LCP, however, I think that the work that's been done to date on the general plan exceeded the initial scope, so I'm not sure that it would result in a net decrease in overall budget. I think the reality is going to be, is once the general plan's done, DCE, the Planning Center is committed to providing us with a draft zoning ordinance, climate action plan, they'll make revisions based on staff input, but I do expect that staff is going to do the heavy lifting to bring that through the adoption process and making final revisions.
Okay, I'll, I'll step back from the mic and let Councilmember Norton have his way.
Maybe, I'm sure that the question should go to Richard, to them, but there's, there's a number of listed things that were completed of documents I've never even heard of, that we've never seen, and I could read those off to you, and maybe I'm missing something here, but this is, this is a list of work that's been completed in this contract, one of them is the Pacific Cove City Hall Visioning Workbook, the preliminary greenhouse gas reduction measures, the village hotel design concepts, I understand that because we went through it partially through a process, and we pulled that away from them, I understand that. And by the way, wasn't Barry Swinson supposed to pay for that? Wasn't that part of his deal?
He did pay.
Oh, he did, okay, okay. A seawell level rise assessment, I, I don't, I've never seen any document like that. Local hazard mitigation, I think they did, somebody did, probably they did that, okay? The Green Environmental Economic Development Report, a land use map, and a draft land use, land use element, I haven't seen any of those documents. I mean, it's not something that's been presented to the public or to us as the city council to even know what is completed there.
The land use map and the land use element were part of the general plan that we presented last week. A lot of the other studies were part of the visioning process, that when we had workshops with the community, we developed the community's visions and values and goals, and used that as the basis for developing the general plan. So they're not documents that we're going to be seeking city council adoption of, but they were used to create the general plan.
Okay. I'll wait to hear from the consultants, if I, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had some questions about the, the numbers and the projections on page 93. And one, just to clarify, the revenue numbers showing for 11, 12, and 12, 13, the ones that are moderately and significantly over $100,000, do those amounts include the grants that we received?
I believe it does. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Councilman Story, that's just the general plan maintenance fund shown in that table. So that's the amount of revenue that we collect as an assessment on our building permits, and then we use to update the general plan or other general plan related activities.
Okay, so the grant amounts aren't reflected in these projections, is the account for 13, 14 coming in at $70,000 as, as we projected here? And I guess I'm getting to the, to the punchline here, is why are 13, 14, 14, 15 somewhat less than, certainly much less than 11, 12 revenues?
The revenue projection is based on the number of permits that we expect to receive over, over a year, and so it's just, it's just based on a forecast of the numbers of permits that we've seen come in over the counter, and taking an estimate based on those trends.
Big chunk there may be the hotel last year.
The hotel and Target both were significant in those two years.
Yeah. Now, there are a number of significant projects that are moving forward at this time, the auto mall project is moving forward, and so, and if 38th Avenue takes place, both of those projects would result in pretty significant payments. These were the numbers that were generated last July, the 13, 14, $70,000 estimate, I don't know whether or not it's still, our best current estimate is probably a relatively conservative number, a couple of big projects would push us up above that, that's been our historic experience.
Okay, thank you. And also, on the housing element in 14, 15, and, and then generating the shortfall, that expense, how much of that is projected to be for consultants and how much for staff?
We, we estimated that hiring a consultant could cost upwards of $100,000, and then the other 50 would account for staff time, but those are rough numbers, we don't have a formal estimate, so it was our best guess.
You'll recall that the last housing element, we did primarily in-house, we did bill some staff time directly to the project, I think the total cost was something like $80,000 or $90,000.
We had big discussions about that, I remember.
Yes, very difficult hearings.
Why do we have to spend so much money?
Right. And, okay, I just, one final point, the next paragraph below the chart says, "A copy of the draft land use settlement has been redlined attachment one," and I, it wasn't in my packet, and so I would just like to ask that.
This was the July 25th staff report, when we last presented a budget update, and at that time, we, we were making revisions to the land use settlement.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question. It was our decision to back out the zoning ordinance, because we saw the difficulty in the process of doing that. How much work had been done on the zoning ordinance before we, we came to that point?
It's my understanding that we have a draft zoning ordinance, the consultants put together the framework of it, what we have not done, though, is gone through the process to identify the various issues that we think need to be discussed, and, and presented those to the planning commission and council yet, so I think there's still a lot of work remaining in that regard.
If we decided not to use the consultants for the rest of the zoning ordinance work, my concern is that that particular line item in your chart, if you want to go back to it, is billed out at 76%, not a lot of room in there for anything else, and there are a lot of items on that, on that particular block, you know, zoning ordinance, LCP, general plan, EIR, there's, there's a lot of work left there.
There is, I, I think, you know, what I envision is that we're going to need the consultants to help us prepare the first draft, take some staff revisions, clean it up, but at that point, I think it's something that staff can manage, that we can make revisions, we can present the issues to the commission and the council, and hopefully get it into working form that's to everyone's satisfaction.
Keep in mind, no one is more or better equipped to deal with our zoning ordinance than we are.
Right.
Because we live with it every day.
We agree.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Good evening, would the consultants like to make a presentation? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Harland and council, my name is Steve Noack, I'm the managing principal with Planning Center, DCE, in the Berkeley office, I was last before you in the, at the July meeting, and I'm here again to basically commit the staff resources of our office to completing this job within the allotted budget and within, including all of the contract provisions. We have 44 people in our office, Ben is the project manager, will provide more information, but I just want you to know that we are committed to completing this job within the budget, and I think we've made a lot of progress since July in terms of the draft general plan, the first admin draft EIR, and we're really looking forward to completing this work as, as quickly as possible, and delivering the best product we can to the community of Capitola.
Thank you, are there any questions? Mike?
Knowing full well and having seen a lot of contracts run their course, and they usually start off with a honeymoon, a several-year marriage, now we're getting near separation, so don't take this as any kind of, you know, dig or anger, upset with your firm, it's, it's performed in an exemplary fashion. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, how secure are you in our budget, is it realistic? Do you feel we'll get to the end of the road and not have to be here to allocate more general funds?
Yes, because we commit to completing our contractual obligations within the agreed-upon budget, and it includes, we, we write down our invoices, so if we're spending more than this budget will allow over the period of preparing the documents, we actually write off those hours, and we've already done that on this project, because project management is an art and a science, there are many different components that go into all of these documents, we have, we, you know, as I say, commit our staff resources, so we are, we are committed to, to finishing the job within the contract. Now, obviously, if there was a, an item, an additional request, or some change in the scope of work, then we would come back and ask for additional budget, but we are committed to completing this job as it's laid out with the existing budget and the contract as it's laid out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Steve, could you explain to what you mean by complete? What, what is complete here?
What's complete is.
Obligation to the.
The deliverables as they're outlined in our scope of work, the draft and final deliverables for the project, for attending all the meetings that we're under contract to attend, and, you know, providing every task as we have outlined in the scope of work.
Will we have a zoning ordinance and a general plan by the time this, this project is completed by you?
Yes, that, that's what we're committed to do in our contract.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Any other presentations? This is a public hearing, would anyone from the public like to speak at this time? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council, Dennis?
I have a couple of questions still, do, in, in the contract, we did see it at one time, but there's been a number of amendments and changes to that, I'm sure that we have something that's updated. Is there a completion retention? What is the retention for final product?
There is no retention in the contract.
Okay. So, Rich, how, how do you see DCE helping us through the process with the zoning ordinance, which we feel is going to be a most difficult task? What do you see the, the relationship, and how do we complete that as a city?
I, I think really what I expect of DCE is to provide a, a solid draft of the zoning ordinance, because we know it's going to change as we go through the public process, and as Councilman Termini pointed out, I think at that point, it's really up to us to make those changes, determine what's best for Capitola, and I think that's a role that staff will be able to play, do the heavy lifting, and play the large part of the role. And at that point, I think the consultant would be providing some support, but would be more in the background.
Is there a list in our contract with them as to what documents will be completed at the completion of our contract?
Yes.
There is, okay. We need to, can we see a copy of that when you have, next with them?
Certainly.
Okay. It seems like we've taken the emphasis off 41st Avenue at this point, there seems to be more consensus there on the general plan part of it, there still seems to be some give and take and concerns about the village in a couple areas within the city we heard in the last general plan update, and that a lot of those are physically tied to our zoning ordinance, and how we deal with, with issues within the zoning ordinance to complete our general plan. Will we have to step aside on the general plan process to complete part of the zoning ordinance to actually get a format for completion of our general plan?
I don't believe so.
You don't believe so?
I, I think the logical sequence is to adopt your general plan and then update the zoning ordinance that's consistent and distinct from your general plan.
And so, right now, are we, are we in process with the EIR public review?
We have not released it for public review, we're making final revisions as we speak, and we expect to, to send it out in the next two to three weeks.
And so, when would you expect us to complete the general plan part of this process?
The schedule right now is March, April, 2014.
So you'll have the EIR and the general plan at the same time?
Correct.
That'll be, okay. Is that, at that point, that we start into the zoning ordinance?
Once the general plan is adopted, we'll, we'll turn our focus to updating the zoning ordinance.
And how long a process do you think that is, Rich?
A lot of that's going to depend on, on the public process, and there's different ways to approach it, you know, we, we could come forward with an entire comprehensive zoning ordinance update, or we might decide that it's better to take it a couple chapters at a time, so that we can.
Do you anticipate using the general plan committee on that, or is that something that really takes place at, at the planning commission and city council?
I think before we, we start that process, we'll report back to the planning commission and council, and seek some guidance, and offer a proposal on the approach. I think my recommendation will be that we, that we constitute a, a similar but different group than the GPAC, that includes some stakeholders, people that we see coming over the counter and processing permits with us, as well as community members and other stakeholders. So I think a similar process, maybe a little bit of a different makeup.
Okay. I would like to see some kind of completion retention agreement between DCE and us as to how much is held till the project is completed. Thank you.
I had a question from last time that I forgot to ask, why were the, the language said that the corners of 41st and Capitola Avenue could have higher density, or they recommended a higher FAR or something like that, was that just because those are big corners at the intersection, or there were plans that if, they're big lots, that if, that they could take a, a larger denser building?
Through the GPAC process, there were concerns raised about increasing the FLRA ratios on the east side of 41st Avenue, but there seemed to be recognition that the corner of Capitola Road and 41st, on all four corners, could be appropriate for more intense building types.
I wouldn't like to see it on all four corners, you know, maybe one, but I don't know how you'd say no.
and processing permits with us, as well as community members and other stakeholders. So I think a similar process, maybe a little bit of a different makeup.
Okay. I would like to see some kind of completion-retention agreement between DCE and us as to how much is held till the project is completed. Thank you.
I had a question from last time that I forgot to ask. Why were the, the language said that the corners of 41st and Capitola Avenue could have higher density, or they recommended a higher FAR or something like that. Was that just because those are big corners at the intersection, or there were plans that if, they're big lots, that if, that they could take a larger, denser building?
Through the G-PAC process, there were concerns raised about increasing the FLRA ratios on the east side of 41st Avenue. But there seemed to be recognition that the corner of Capitola Road and 41st on all four corners could be appropriate for more intense building types.
I wouldn't like to see it on all four corners. You know, maybe one, but I don't know how you'd say no to, like, yes to one person and no to another. I think we just need to be really careful about that. That kind of a look there, I think, would be too much.
Or that any one of the corners, not necessarily all four, to be built up, but that those sites could be appropriate individually for an increased FLRA ratio.
Other questions, discussion?
Just a discussion, two comments. One, I think part of the delay of the process is there's been a lack of agreement between a large group of people, so I know that has made this a drawn-out process. The other question on the retention, it's a legal question, I believe. If we already signed a contract, are we able to enforce a retention after the fact?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments about this? Are we ready for a motion?
I think it's just to receive the report and also move.
Second?
I'd like to just add a condition to it. I'll second the motion. That staff work with DCE and show us some kind of ability to, to show us that there's some retention capability on the end of this contract to making sure that the job is completed before poll payment.
Yeah, the amendment's satisfactory.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down again. Item number B. Consider the Art and Cultural Commission's recommendation to appoint some new members to the Art and Cultural Commission, and to consider a resolution amending the commission bylaws regarding membership. And we have a staff report.
Good evening, council. We have the Art and Cultural Commission. The item before you, they had several appointments that were expiring, December 31st, 2005. And our Art and Cultural Commission met last week, or November 12th, and we reviewed those, these reappointments, as well as we had some additional applicants, and we had three additional very well-qualified applicants who attended our meeting as well. And we had a very in-depth discussion about how to proceed. And the recommendation by the Art and Cultural Commission was to reappoint those existing members, which is Kim Hogan as the artist, Roy Johnson as the arts professional. And at the at-large positions, there were three that were up, David Kramer, James Wallace, and Nathan Cross. So the commission recommended reappointing all those individuals, as well as expanding the membership by additional three at-large members, and appointing Lori Hill, Joan Davison, and Stephanie Gelman to fill those three seats. So that's the item that's before you is the reappointments and the expansion of the, amending the bylaws to expand the membership, and then appoint those three individuals to those three seats.
Thank you very much. Other questions?
Just a question as to what was the suggestion, the purpose to expand from nine to 12?
Well, what happened at that meeting, we had these extremely qualified three individuals, and our existing members are extremely qualified as well. And there is quite a bit of work to be done on the Art and Cultural Commission. As you know, we have many events throughout the summer. There's a lot of activities. The public art program is ramping up quite a bit. And the commission thought that that would be a good way to include these members and bring them in, have plenty of duties for them to do if we expanded the membership.
Was that a unanimous vote?
I don't recall. Was it?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Dennis?
I'm not against this. I think it's fine. If the Arts Commission thinks that's the, but we have had experience before with committees that have been too large. And one of them was, just recently, was the commission environment was too large. And if anyone sat on the Village Master Plan Advisory Committee when we had like 16 people on it, really difficult to, the decision process becomes real difficult when you have too many people. But if your guys are comfortable with it, Mike, I think it's fine.
We have never not had a quorum because it is a generally good time at the old Art and Cultural Commission. I wish the Finance Advisory Committee, which is also a generally great time, had the kind of participation.
Are there any questions? Is this a public hearing? Would anyone from the public like to speak? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I'll move the motion. Staff recommendations.
Yeah, I'd like to second the motion. But I do have maybe a job for the Arts Commission now that they're going to be expanded constitution.
You're a platoon now.
Right, yes. I mean, I think it's wonderful that we have so many local residents, so talented, local residents that are going to want to work with our Arts Commission. They do wonderful things. But I don't know, maybe all of you saw also Mr. Beppes, I believe, email. And I would certainly like to, I know that's a private project, but really have maybe the Art and Cultural Commission really look at that and maybe take that on and come up with some good ideas for that. Because, you know, after I saw that, I actually, you know, drove by there, dang, if he ain't right.
He's right.
Say where that is for the audience.
Oh, yes. It's on Capitola Avenue, the intersection of Capitola Avenue and Hill, but just south of Hill Street. Anybody going by there, you'll see there's just the big cinder blocks right now, you know, large area and tiered, and it's just screaming for an art project there.
And we love cinder block walls. It's our blank palette, and it is on our December agenda.
That's great. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Okay, any other discussion or questions or a motion? We have a motion on, a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move item E up, which is to adopt a resolution opposing the United States Coast Guard's proposal, proposed removal of Santa Cruz Lighted Whistle Buoy, AKA the Mile Buoy.
Madam Mayor, council members, the Coast Guard, in an effort to balance its budget, has proposed a number of cost reductions throughout the California region, probably throughout the entire U.S. Included in that proposal is the elimination of the lighted buoy, the Mile Buoy in Santa Cruz, as well as several other agents of navigation in this region. Staff was contacted by the Harbor District last week and asked whether we would consider opposing the elimination of the Mile Buoy. In addition, we were contacted by a member of the public who also suggested that the city should take a position in opposition to the Coast Guard eliminating the buoy. So on your agenda this evening is to consider a resolution that we would submit to the Coast Guard in opposition to their planned removal of the Mile Buoy off of our coastline. I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak? And I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I will move the staff recommendation that we oppose the removal of the buoy without further comment.
Second?
Under discussion, let's CC a copy of the letter to the directors and the executive director of the Port District, Congressman Sam Farr.
And all the sailors at sea.
And anyone else that we think is appropriate.
Coast Guard Admiral or whoever was in charge of the city coast.
Department of Defense, whoever we can think of.
Monterey Bay Sanctuary, fishing game.
Yeah.
Buccaneers.
Buccaneers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. That's a, that'd be terrible if that happened.
Would be terrible.
Yeah. Okay, we have an item that was continued, item D, and then we have item C. And I believe Sam's going to recuse himself at this point, which is why we switched the item, so he could, wouldn't have to wait for another item.
Well, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to explain, this item is considering funding for the housing project, emergency housing project with the Community Action Board. My wife is the deputy director of Community Action Board, and therefore I'm going to recuse myself from this vote and consideration.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving to everyone here and everyone in the audience.
Thank you very much, Sam. We'll see you in December. We're going to be having just one meeting in December. We skipped the second meeting. So this is to consider funding for the city's emergency housing assistance and the security deposit affordable housing program.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor, council members. And in June of this past year, we presented some affordable housing options for the council's consideration. And at that time, the council directed staff to identify funding sources to reinstate affordable housing programs. Since that time, Senate Bill 341 was passed, which is, becomes effective January 1st, 2014, and it'll allow housing successor funds to be allocated towards affordable housing programs and administration of affordable housing programs. The city currently has approximately $91,000 available in our housing successor fund. So we are proposing tonight to fund the security deposit program and the emergency housing assistance program. The security deposit program provides forgivable loans to low and very low-income households that cover costs of moving into rental units. And in the past, it has been administered by the county housing authority, who has acknowledged that they would be willing to administer that program for us again in the future. We have proposed to provide $10,000 through the end of this fiscal year into the security deposit program. The emergency housing assistance program provides emergency short-term housing assistance to low-income households for preventing eviction and homelessness. This was administered in the past by Community Action Board, and they too have told us that they would be happy to administer it again in the future. Staff proposes to fund that program with $30,000 through the end of the fiscal year. A couple of points that the council should keep in mind is that these are short-term funding allocations. We do not have a long-term funding source, and that there is a trade-off to funding these programs, and that we wouldn't be accumulating monies for larger future projects to help affordable housing elsewhere. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Mike?
I have a question. I understand where the funds are coming from. Are we at any risk of a clawback of the repayment of the loans that were originally made with RDA funds?
At this point, I think the simple answer to that is no. The source of funding for these programs, for those of you at home who are watching, is repaid housing loans that the city has made in the past. At this point, all of, excuse me, all of the housing assets of the former redevelopment agency have been turned over to the city. And we've gone through quite an extensive due diligence and audit process with the state, and they've signed off on all these assets, if you will, all these loans coming back to the city to be used, consistent with this new legislation that was passed. So there is, there are assets that can be used to fund these kinds of programs in the future. Guessing the repayment schedule and when they'll become available is difficult at best. So we will, if you recall, when we originally brought this to your council, I think the balance in the successor agency was less. We've received some loans repaid since then. And the clarification that SB 341 provides makes it clear that we can use these funds for this kind of program. And as your community development director pointed out, the trade-off is that should a mobile home park potentially come up for sale, or another larger-scale project become available, in the past, the city has had those housing funds and been able to opportunistically participate and help with some of those acquisitions. Not saying that funding these programs now will preclude that in the future, but certainly it's the same pot of money, most likely. Nevertheless, these programs are important programs in our community, and they affect many people in a very positive way, and we are recommending that we fund them this evening.
We've found other funding sources as well, very often for these projects as they come up. This is such an important program immediately that not doing it with the prospect of it perhaps being needed in the years to come would be foolish.
Can you check with 211 and see if they have this information also? Because that's exactly the kind of thing that they're supposed to be giving information out to, and maybe we could put it in our next newsletter also to remind people, just kind of once a year, remind people that we have these programs.
Very critical.
They may be all used up immediately, but still to publicize it.
I'll move to approve the budget amendment.
Second?
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good. Okay.
Can we move to continue this last item?
We did.
We did. We all did that. That's right.
Then that concludes our business for tonight, unless there's any other oral communications people would like, or announcements, or awards, or...
Continue.
One little announcement. Just wanted to confirm with the council that they're all registered for the Turkey Trot Race in Santa Clara. You don't have to run, but we're all unanimously registered as a council for a donation to the Second Harvest. Are you running?
Thank you.
Are you going to be there? There's a walk. Because we can meet you there. We could meet you there if you want.
The Turkey Trot.
Yeah. And I'll be returning t-shirts to you following the event, okay?
Thank you very much. That's really a great, yeah, it's an important project, and it's a great community event, and will raise a lot of money for Second Harvest Food Bank.
I have one question. Steve, please. Stephen, last meeting, we talked briefly about that sidewalk continuation coming down from Hill Street in front of that house there.
Yes.
It's right past the wall that you got, we talked about earlier. Had you any thought on that? Is that something we can do? Is there money for that? It's a really important connection to have, because right now, we're forcing people, they come around the corner, they're from Hill Street, they got to walk into the street before they catch the sidewalk all the way down to the village. We have a clear sidewalk, except for that one, that one lot there. Is there any way we can, we can...
I have looked at it. We do have to build a retaining wall as part of that, so I haven't gotten a price yet. But I can look at it really a little bit more when I get, after the holiday.
Is there money there that we can do that section?
We can look in the CIP program for some extra money in there. There isn't any budgeted money for it at this time, but it's probably about a $30,000 or $40,000 project.
Okay. It's a really important continuation for the public up on that, on that street. They've been asking for years that we actually put sidewalks on Hill Street, and we haven't done that. But we, but we can at least get them down the hill, and it makes a continuation all the way, actually, if I'm not mistaken, it goes from Soquel Drive. They have continuous sidewalks now all the way to, through the county, all the way to the village, except for that one section, if I'm not mistaken, so.
We are planning some sidewalk work on Hill, though, aren't we?
We're looking at probably putting in a bike lane, not necessarily a sidewalk at this point.
Didn't we talk about that in the expanded CIP?
Yeah, there is money.
By the post office?
Yeah, about removing parking on one side of the street.
Right, right.
And I don't think there's money for a sidewalk, but there's money to remove the parking, and we can look at that.
So if there, that kind of, that kind of precludes the idea of putting any kind of mural or something on that wall, that if we plan on doing that, they shouldn't do any work on that, any artwork on that wall until we have it finished, because you're right, we have to continue it for a little while, so.
We'll make it a bigger mural, or tile project, or fountain, or something.
Whatever you want. Thank you, Steve.
And Steve, will you please tell the crews that the city looks really nice, the landscaping looks fabulous, and the beautiful trees along Capitola Road changing color. We have orange and reds, and they planted hawthorn trees at one point, so we have little